This is the regular meeting of the Rental Housing Board. Today is Wednesday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Seeing we have forums, this meeting is officially called to order. Not ever before, Secretary, please take your call.
With me here?
Here.
Miss Beranza Martinez?
Here.
Tracy La? Ernie Aguilera?
Thank you. Please rise and welcome.
Repeat after me. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
This time, members of the public may address the Rental Housing Board. Any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. No action can be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the board? Please note that you have three minutes to speak.
There are no public comments.
This is time for the committee to consider matters under respect calendar item one. Do I have a motion to consider item one? Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
I have a comment.
Oh, yes.
Um, there's a typo on the minutes from August twenty-nine. It says the year twenty-twenty-three instead of number four.
We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else or any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye pones. Matter approved by unanimous. Okay, we have two items under work studies. Please note that there would be no motion or action taken on these items. First item under work study session is Rental Housing Board Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities. The second item under work study session is Rental Housing Board Orders.
Afternoon, board members. My name is Andrea Garcia Miller. I'm one of the Assistant City Attorney's Office in the City Attorney's Office. And I'm going to be presenting a training. So. I don't have everything so close. Staff's going to present. Presentation. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay, thanks. Alright, so this presentation or training is titled Rental Housing Board Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities. Next slide, please. And because it's coming from the City Attorney's Office, we've got to have disclaimers in there. The following information is provided for board member training purposes. The following does not constitute legal advice, and thank you all for your attention and attendance. So, the training goals I have here, which I hope to accomplish are: Number one, highlight the authority and duties of the Rental Housing Board. Number two, explain open and public nature of the meetings, just the Brown Act. Discuss meeting procedures, and then strategize on how to implement best practices. Next thing, please. So, goal number one, highlight the authority and duties of the Rental Housing Board. The authority of the Rental Housing Board, or as I have abbreviated in here, RHB, was created within the rent stabilization and just caused eviction ordinance, which is in the San Diego Municipal Code at section, starting at section eight dash thirty-one hundred. And the whole list that follow. So, first, the Rental Housing Board has the following powers and duties. Hold regular meetings at least once each calendar month, and for as needed, as fixed by the bylaws. Number two, conduct hearings on petitions, applications, and appeals of hearings determined by a hearing officer, submitted by landlords or tenants under the ordinance. This is a quasi-judicial function, and I hope to have more training later at another meeting on this issue. The, uh, number three, um, homlegate and implement policies and procedures for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance. Make such studies, surveys, and investigations, conduct hearings, and obtain such information as is necessary to carry out its powers and duties. This is more of a legislative. Number four, review and assess clearly that sufficient number of staff are employed, including a program administrator, officers, housing counselors, and legal staff, as may be necessary to perform its function efficiently in order to fulfill the purposes of the ordinance. Number five, any other duties as necessary to administer and enforce the ordinance. And then finally, such other duties that are designated by resolution or city council. Do you guys recognize this? So, let's go over board members. That's governed by section eight dash thirty-one eighty-eight. There are seven board members. Three tenants, and within the tenant's members, at least one has to be a mobile home tenant. Number two, two landlords, and then number three, two at-large members with no financial interest in and no ownership of income generating housing. So, more on at-large members. For our regulations, policies, and procedures, because an at-large member must have no financial interest in and no ownership of income generating rental housing, they cannot be tenants or landlords. For example, an at-large member could be in order of a single-family dwelling, lives in that single-family dwelling without taking out any portion of their significant wealth, so long as they otherwise satisfy the requirements of the ordinance. As part of being a Rental Housing Board member, and when you're nominated, you submit a verified statement of listing of all interests and dealings in real property. You cannot do to ownership, sale, and management of real property within the last three years contained in the ordinance at section eight dash thirty-one eighty-eight. Um, conflicts of interest. All board members shall be subject to the requirements of the California Political Reform Act and other relevant laws regarding conflicts of interest. And, um, in case, uh, if you're familiar with the Political Reform Act, just in short, it prohibits a public official at any level of state or local government from making, participating in, making, or attempting to use the official's position to influence a government decision in which the official knows or has reason to know the official had the financial interest. In the same vein, disqualification, a board member shall be disqualified from participating in any hearing on any application, petition, or appeal where the board member is either a landlord or tenant residing at the subject property or has any other form of conflict of interest. So you want to recuse yourself of that particular hearing. Board members' terms, um, governed by section eight dash thirty-one eighty-one. And then, whatever shall serve for a term of four years or until their respective successors are appointed or qualified. In no event shall any person be eligible for reappointment as served three consecutive terms of four years. Bylaws. The board bylaws will provide the rules of regulations and procedures for conducting Rental Housing Board meetings. I believe this might be an agenda item today. So, bylaws are subject to adoption by the board. Rental Housing Board members are public officials. While you remain an individual with your associated rights, you are a public official representing the City of Santa Ana and not necessarily your own personal views. Some board member communication procedures. So, I have a question. When do you approach staff? Or do you ask, and when? We recommend that you invite questions to staff prior to meetings. Some other, uh, just general concepts and good practice are give others the opportunity to speak and do not lecture. All members have equal rights and refrain from side discussions with fellow board members. Uh, relationships with staff, uh, city staff may work with the Rental Housing Board, but they are accountable to the city manager. It is not within the Rental Housing Board's authority to tell staff to prepare an amendment to the code, tell staff how to approach an issue, to tell staff about administrative tasks. Above recommendations should be shared with the council member who appointed you, or the Rental Housing Board can make a recommendation to speak. Uh, relationship with the council. The Rental Housing Board has the authority as contained in the ordinance. I'll refer to the rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance as the ordinance is a mouthful, so I'll just say ordinance. The city council also may designate other duties to the Rental Housing Board. Social media, this is a big one. Digital world now. The City of Santa Ana has right, interest, and expectation in deciding what is spoken on behalf of the city on social media sites who are personally responsible for the content you publish on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, forgetting a lot of them, or any other form of social media. You should not post obscenities, slurs, and personal attacks. Social media, as, as a board member, the line between public and private, quite blurred. Social media used by a city or its officials raises numerous fears of human issues as well as some public record and act around that concerns. Let's get into, um, which is the concept of open and public nature of these meetings. So what is the Brown Act? The Ralph M. Brown Act is a California law originally adopted in nineteen fifty-three. The key to the Brown Act is the single sentence. And in summary, all meetings shall be open and public, except when the Brown Act authorizes otherwise. So think of the government's house as being made out of glass, and the curtains can only be drawn to further the public's interest. So what is a meeting? Um, a meeting is a gathering of a majority of members to hear or discuss any item of city business or potential for city business. So with a board of seven, uh, majority is four. It requires notice, it requires an agenda, and it requires time for public comment. Unless a majority gathering falls into one of the Brown Act's assumptions to the definition of a meeting, it will be considered a meeting subject to the Act. Does that mean it's limited to face-to-face gatherings only? No, meetings subject to the Brown Act are not limited to face-to-face gatherings. It also includes any communication medium or device through which a majority of the body discusses, deliberates, or takes action on a business item outside of a notice meeting. So that can include emails, text messages, social media posts or messages. Again, we live in a virtual world, so we just have to be cognizant of, um, what we say and what we do in the judgment. So, social media under the Brown Act. They do talk about it under the Brown Act. So, a public official may communicate on social media regarding a matter or legislative body's subject matter jurisdiction to answer questions, provide information to the public, or to solicit information from the public. The big caveat, so long as a majority of the members of the legislative body do not use the social media platform to discuss amongst themselves official business, so. Slide please. What is discuss among themselves? Well, it could mean somebody making a post, somebody commenting on a post, somebody uses digital icons that express reactions, happy face, thumbs up, thumbs down, paid by other members of the legislative body, a screenshot and a repost, and a liking or disliking. And social media, these are not all of them, Snapchat, Instagram, Facebook. So, this is open and public. The, the meetings are open and public. The Brown Act requires local government business to be conducted and open and public, like we're sitting here today. It applies to government body of a local agency, a city council, and any commission, committee, or board that is created by force of action. Brown Act does not like, and I'm arguing, it's a bit less than a bar. There are different types of meetings. From the next board. So, standing committee. That's where there's a continuing subject matter. There's no venue, longevity. Those types of meetings are subject to the Brown Act's nature and agenda. Comment, et cetera. An ad hoc committee, which ad hoc is Latin meaning to this, is for a specific task or a specific situation. It's just for a short period of time, and it dissolves upon completion of the task. And that type of meeting is not subject to. Brown Act. Now let's get into the Brown Act exemptions. The physical. Brown Act does not apply to individual contacts between a board member and any other person, for example, a conference call, or a telephone call, or other conversation with another person, like staff, constituents, press, et cetera. But you have to be careful because individual contacts used to do in stages, what would be prohibited in one step. That's, this is the concept of a serial meeting. Let me explain what a serial meeting is. Under the Brown Act, a majority of members of the legislative bodies shall not, outside of the meetings, outside of these chambers, use a series of communications, any kind of directly interviews to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of importance, business meeting, what's on our, what's on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So, board can't develop, or board members can't develop collectively outside of the open and public meeting. So what's the problem with serial meetings? It deprives the public of the opportunity to observe and participate in decision-making. Again, the Brown Act says these meetings are supposed to be open and public. And these serial meetings can occur by what they describe as a daisy chain. They call it daisy chain or a hub-and-spoke sequence. So, a daisy chain is where member A contacts member B, and then member B contacts member C, member C contacts member G, et cetera, et cetera, until a forum has actually discussed and taken action on the item. A hub-and-spoke type of serial meeting is a sequential contacts. So A contacts B, then A contacts C, then A contacts D, and shares ideas, all the ideas with the majority. That's another type of serial meeting, which is prohibited by the Brown Act. So here's some graphics for people who kind of like visual stuff better. Sometimes it's easier to see. So, the daisy chain. There's A talking to B, B talks to C, C talks to D. Get the game with telephone, for those of you who are like me. You know, the telephone game where you tell somebody something and then it goes down the chain. The hub-and-spoke, like I said, it's where A contacts B, then A contacts C, shares what B said, A contacts D, shares what C said. So, those are serial meetings that are prohibited by the Brown Act. So, how do we avoid these types of serial meetings? Direct contacts about city business with fellow members. You know, avoiding direct contact about city business with fellow board members are the cleanest means by which a serial meeting can occur. So if one participant discloses the views of another participant to a third or a fourth member, a serial meeting results. So the best way to avoid this is to refrain from discussing agency business with, with the board members inside of these chambers, or sharing views with others outside of the meeting. So, um, communications with staff and serial meetings. So members of a body may consult with city staff outside of a meeting for questions or information about a matter. Staff and board members should be very careful not to disclose the comments or position of another member. Again, this is where we get into kind of murky waters where, you know, facilitate a collective currents outside of a noticed and open meeting, which will result in a Brown Act violation. Other exemptions under the Brown Act. So we talked about individual contacts. You know, talking with staff individually is fine. Their exemptions are seminars and conferences, open to the public and of general interest. So if, you know, four board members go to a seminar, that's fine. They don't talk about city business. Community meetings that are open and publicized, so other meetings, you know, by the city. Meetings of other legislative bodies, if going to, you know, another city council meeting in a different city, social or ceremonial occasions. Again, with the caveat, the majority present at any of these cannot discuss any items of city business or else meeting business. So, let's go over just kind of general meeting procedures. So who is the chairperson? The chairperson, AKA chair, is elected by the board annually. And that's per, per section eight, thirty-one eighty-eight. Uh, the chairperson shall have the responsibility of informing the city council of board actions or inactions and the reasons therefor, if necessary. So, this is the basic format of discussing agenda items, and this is kind of uniform throughout all boards and commissions with the city. So the first step is, uh, the chair announces the agenda item and clearly states the subject. The second step is the chair invites a presentation of the staff report on the item, including any recommendation. Step three, the chair asks the board members if they have questions on an item for clarification. Step four, the chair invites public comment on the item. If it is on the agenda, it'd be heard as a public hearing. All public comment on the respective item is heard at this time, and then the public hearing is closed by the chair. If the matter is not on the agenda as a public hearing, any member of the public can speak about it in general public comment period preceding the business agenda. Public comment may be limited to three minutes for each speaker. At the end of public comments, uh, the chair should announce that the public input has concluded. The fifth step, uh, the chair invites a motion on the item and announces the name of the board member making the motion. Step six, the chair invites a second to the motion and announces the name of the board member who seconds the motion. Seventh step, uh, after a motion is made and seconded, the chair repeats the motion or asks the maker of the motion or the board member secretary to repeat it. The eighth step is the chair invites discussion of the motion. If a lengthy discussion occurs, the chair should repeat the motion and make sure everyone understands. A lengthy discussion sometimes. Again, what's, what's the motion on the floor? Uh, the ninth step, uh, the chair asks for a vote on the item. So it's either a yes, a no, or an abstain. And then, tenth step, the chair announces the results of the vote and what action, if any, of the board. A member may amend a motion by saying, I move to amend the motion by, like, uh, a member needs a second member to amend a motion. The amended motion is debatable unless the motion to be amended itself is not debatable. An amended motion can always be amended. A, a majority vote is needed, and an amended motion can always be reconsidered. So, we could, we are reconsidering motions. A member may reconsider any action by saying, I reconsider the vote on the link. It can only be made by a member on the prevailing side who has, should change their position or views. Only a member who voted on the prevailing side of the motion can, can motion for reconsideration. A member needs a second member to reconsider the action. And then the reconsideration of the motion is debatable, only if the main question has not been debated yet. A reconsideration of the motion may not be amended. A majority vote is needed, and reconsideration cannot be further reconsidered. Public participation. So, the Brown Act requires two types of public comment periods. Uh, general audience, public comment during which the public may comment on a non-agenda item. And then comments pertaining to specific agenda items which must be heard prior to consideration of the item. Discussion of non-agenda items, limited exemptions. So, members may briefly respond to public comments or questions and provide a referral to staff or other resources. Members may ask questions for clarification. Members may report on their own activities, and members may request staff to report back on a matter or issue. So, let's go to goal four and hopefully strategize on best practices. Hopefully, these are kind of common sense, but I think they're worth noting and discussing a little bit. So, courtesy and decorum. One person has the floor at a time. Uh, the chair first recognizes each speaker. Discussion focuses on the agenda item, not on personalities, and the chair has the right to cut off discussion that is too personal, too loud, or rude. Um, maintaining stability in meetings. Do not attack or question motives of other members. Limit misunderstandings. Get the facts. Use fair processes. Listen with an open mind and focus discussion on the actual agenda item. I think this is an important one. Do not engage in two-way dialogue with the audience. Your job appears to be to discuss the words yourselves. Prepare in advance of the meeting by reviewing the agenda and staff reports. And then if you have a specific question or concern, contact staff in advance of the meeting so they can. And then if you have a specific question or concern, contact staff in advance of the meeting so they can prepare to address them at the meeting on the by-election. So just some closing comments. We hope you enjoy your time as a board member and you can provide a valuable service to city council staff and the community. Thank you. And that concludes the presentation. Did anyone have any questions? I think that's probably something you wanted to send to staff.
Are we going to the second item? Then the second item of the session is.
The item before the board is a consideration of the bylaws. At this time, it would be appropriate to take any comments or questions on these bylaws and if they are acceptable, chair can seek a motion. In order to approve the bylaws, we need to take a a roll call vote. And seek a first and second. So now the chair would seek a motion on the bylaws from the other members of the board. Comments. We need to do a whole. You can, you can say if there's all those in favor, any opposed, and if you hear no opposed, you'll say, motion passes unanimously. All you do is just say. So now's the time for staff member comments. I just wanted to thank you for your patience. Again, to bring your attention, we do have two appeals that need to be heard by the board. We do need to fill vacancies on the, on the rental housing board. The sooner the better. We will be speaking with council members. If you know anybody who has a vacancy and is on city council, please also put a reminder as well to, to fill their vacancies. It's possible during the appeal process that we may have to go through multiple meetings, not only for training, but possibly even for to hear the matter on two different appeals that are being submitted. So I wanted to bring that up too, because we may need to coordinate calendars for these meetings to be held right now. Since we only have four members and that required, that's the full form, we would need a hundred percent participation. So there might be a lot of coordinations from our secretary trying to get times and days to hear the matter and to go.
For coming in and providing the service. I also wanted to let you know that we have secured six workshops, training workshops for tenants and landlords. They were partnered with legal aid of SOCal and we will be starting those in March and I'll go ahead and send you that information via email once I have the locations.
No more comments from staff. Now we can do board members.
Thank you so much. Does, do any board members have any comments? Well, I guess I'll close in. Just wanted to express an appreciation for the city staff. We see all the work you're doing to make sure that community understands the warnings and protections that they have. So I genuinely mean that. So thank you so much. Great. This meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March nineteenth point three five at thirty P M.